All right, we'll call this committee meeting to order. I, uh, we have a quorum here. Let me start with calling the roll to, uh, see who we've got. I'm Don Hall, I'm here.
Uh, Beth Burns, present.
All right.
Ms. Springer, present.
All right, and who do we have on the phone?
Ken Smith.
Okay, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, Phil Cordero, good morning.
All right, Mr. Cordero. And Mr. McPherson, you are on the call as well. Is anyone else on the call? All right. Uh, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Beth Burns, I make a motion to adopt the agenda.
All right, Ms. Burns has made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Springer has made a second. All in favor, say aye.
Beth Burns, aye.
Ken Smith, aye.
Phil Cordero, aye.
All right, thank you. All right, 3.1, K-8 Design Build Update.
Good morning, members of the board. For the next board meeting, we do have scheduled a design build, design development presentation. However, we also have the design build team here today to provide a quick update regarding the present, the letter that was presented to us last week. If it be the pleasure of the board, I would like to invite them up at this time to go through their presentation.
Sure.
Okay?
Aye.
Good morning.
All right, well first off, thank you Dr. Breedlove for carving out some time for us, thanks to the board. We've put together a presentation here just to kind of help us guide through a general update, so we can make sure we're communicating, uh, kind of some of the issues that we're coming across. Uh, if at any time you want to stop us and ask questions, or if we're going, you know, on about anything that, you know, is unnecessary, just interject and let us know. We'll, we'll try to be as brief as we can. All right, so we're gonna go over the, the status, where we are with permits, the schedules, and then Q and A, but again, just, just hop in at any time. Quick overview on status, we've got the early clearing completed. Uh, so we've gotten ahead of the, you know, endangered species roosting season, so that's a, that's a great thing, got it knocked out. We have subcontractor prequalification for all the early site work bidders complete, so we have eight prospective bidders on the turnkey site. We should have everything together between today and tomorrow as far as the early site bid documents, to be able to advertise this to bid and get the process going for procurement of GMP number one. And we're shooting to have that ready for board approval, obviously giving you all as, as much time as possible, but we think it would be possible for us to get going around the first week of June, which is, which is great news. That's earlier than we initially thought. The architectural structural MEP design is at 60%, so we're in the design development phase. We have the Blue Beam Studio going on right now. You know, for comments, I think we've got all facilities engaged in it, reviewing the documents. I was talking to Mike earlier this morning, we're gonna get a, a set of plans actually delivered to a shop tomorrow, so they can see that a little bit better. Uh, and then we have our presentation of the 60% design and the estimate two weeks from today at the board meeting. John, you wanna jump in, just give us an overview on permits?
Yes, certainly. Um, yeah, so John Blasco, Senior Project Manager, Withers Raffinell, we're leading the site design portion of the project in conjunction with Bordeaux and Mosley. So, we are working closely with Pender County Planning Department. We've, are just two small steps away from our master site development approval, just waiting on our approved TIA, which is going through NC DOT, which has its own process. Um, all other requirements of that permit are met. Um, we're working through our major site development, uh, process with, uh, Pender County as well. We're just a few short, small, minor landscape comments away, and also the TIA from approval on that, so we're actually a little bit ahead of our schedule, of our anticipated schedule on that, so that's great news for us. Um, we're working, in fact, with that major, um, site plan we should be submitting this week to, to address all those final landscape comments, and just waiting on the TIA. Um, we've got our erosion control going through DEQ, that is going in this week. We're expecting about a 30-day turnaround and approval for our erosion control package, uh, which will line us up great with the anticipated, um, notice to proceed for site work. Um, our stormwater, um, permits are going in soon. We've ex, we've requested an, an express review, uh, we should hear another week or so with a, um, hopefully mid-June, um, anticipated approvals, which is great for us. And then I keep going back to the TIA, um, which is really working with DOT, it's a very regimented process. Um, you know, we've been, uh, making steps along the way, and we anticipate, uh, August final approval off of, um, DOT. So, all in all, the permit status is going well, Pender County has been a fantastic partner, as well as DEQ, so, um, we've been, um, you know, grateful to have them as partners, so moving forward with that.
Yes, so schedule, um, in our letter that we sent Friday, we were requesting permission to, to move ahead with advertising the early site work package to bid. I think, uh, Mike requested something from me yesterday in writing. You know, as I understand it, you have to do a, kind of a sidebar session to get that approved, so we appreciate y'all taking your time to do that. The reason that we have the early site work package is to remediate the site and the surcharge and all that's been going on. And I think at the time of SD, I went over the fact that we were gonna have to do that, and briefly what that was. I brought SNME here, which is our geotechnical engineer, to go over a little bit more detail of what it is. I just wanna make sure everyone understands why we're having to do it, what it is, and, and the somewhat unpredictable nature of it as far as time is concerned. And basically, you know, those two things are gonna be, one, to get the surcharge in place. You know, we've got between, and, and the soil amount is not finalized. That's part of this final DEQ submittal that we expect to have wrapped up between today and tomorrow, but we've, we've gone from 200,000 to 250,000 yards of import, and this goes hand in glove with how much dirt is actually required to bring into the site, because the site is very close to the water table. And so we're having to bring all this dirt in to get the site up, out of the water table in order to ensure we don't have issues, you know, in the future. So, the time it takes to actually build this mound is, is one aspect of it. And the second part of it is the time it takes for it to actually settle. Number one, we have some control over, we're still working on creative solutions as to how to expedite that. You know, can we, can we do it in two separate phases to get part of the building that we can work on earlier? Um, we've been talking with the prospective site work bidders on trucking this available, uh, the proximity of various borrow sites, considering multiple borrow sites, and we're still working on that, we're hoping, you know, that we can improve it, but we wanna be conservative when we're sharing these concerns with all of you, because, you know, if we're not, and we've been, we're hopeful upfront, that we end up looking bad on the back end. So, basically the information we're presenting, we're, we're hoping to be somewhat worst case, definitely conservative, and just communicating the issues, the hurdles that we have to get over. Just wanting to make sure you understand exactly where we are and be as transparent as possible. So, Nate and Tommy, if you don't mind, with SNME, there are geotechnical engineers, they're gonna walk through a little bit of this?
Yeah, so I'm Nate Buffam with SNME, um, we're the geotechnical engineer on the project. What you see in front of you on the screen is just this, um, profile of the subsurface soil conditions in, within the building pad location. If you focus on, uh, boring C2, which is the middle section, the middle boring log, you can see all the blue, I'll just make this super, try to make this simple. The blue is, is considered clay, and, uh, highly compressible clay. So what we're trying to do with the surcharge program is mimic the loading that the building is gonna have on the soils, and settle those blue layers, make them consolidate and settle. We have predicted, um, and again, this is all based on laboratory testing, um, and our geotechnical analysis, but we are predicting approximately four inches of settlement, um, to occur, um, at, for the building. Um, and in order to surcharge the material out, these clays out in a timely manner, um, we have to build a mound. We knew with the design, with the, with the team, that we had to import a bunch of fill material in order to grade the site anyways. This would be a great opportunity to reduce costs, not have to drive piles, not have to do other deep foundation methods, uh, to, to consolidate the soils. So, with bringing the material in, once all the material is placed, which is what Ben was talking about in regards to, you know, the timing of it, how long it takes to bring the material in, once it's all fully surcharged, we are anticipating and estimating approximately 80 days from that time to, um, consolidate out those clays. Once that's completed, we will be monitoring it. It may happen quicker. We hope our estimates are close, and it doesn't take a little bit longer. But we are anticipating around 80 days. Uh, once that is complete, uh, we will, uh, inform Bordeaux that we can take that material off and start digging footings. So that's kind of an overview of it.
Appreciate that. Yeah, so we've tried to put together a conserva, a conservative timeline here. Uh, the installation of this dirt, we believe we can get 2,000 yards a day at least, so that would be running trucks six days a week. Worst-case scenario, that comes out to early November, to get the surcharge in place before we start monitoring. Again, we're working on how to get this done faster. We're working with the grading contractors, and ultimately, we're in a position where we will dictate to them what the schedule is. Hey, we're gonna have a notice to proceed of, of 6-3 if we think that's realistic, and you have this long to get erosion control done, and you have this long to get it in place. We do have to be realistic, though, with these contractors, because if we're not, they're either not gonna pursue the project, or they're gonna price it, you know, the risk, if they know they can't complete it in time, they're gonna price the risk into the job, and it's not gonna help us schedule-wise anyway. So, that's kind of where we are, that's kind of where we're still working, is how do we work through this? How aggressive can we force them to price the job and still pursue it? You know, that's, that's where we are right now. Nate went over the monitoring, I've kind of got that indicated there, we're, we're hoping it's on the early side. We're concerned that it could last longer, and if it does, there's not a lot we can do about it, and, and then we, we're in a position where we can't recover this time, and that's, that's really the message we're wanting to get across here. And then we're, you know, three to four weeks to get enough dirt out of the way to start building footings, and that's really, big picture, the critical path of the job is building the building, and the first activity is building the footings. And we're saying we need 21 months to 255,000 square foot school. You have to have that time to build it. I, if we don't have that time, we're not setting ourselves up for success. So, that's, that's kind of where, where we're looking off in the future. How do we get to starting these foundations early enough to meet the desired opening date? That's, that's the problem. And then, outside of all that we've gone over here with the surcharge and the settlement, we have DPI, which Ashley's gonna talk about, uh, briefly, just the latest information we've gotten from them.
Yeah, so the Department of Public Instruction, DPI, um, for North Carolina, they have a planning group that is required to review any documents that come out of any school district related to construction, renovation, demolition. Prior to where we are now, uh, we were shooting note about four weeks for their review. Worst-case, they would hit about six weeks. They are now telling everyone, and, uh, Dr. Breedlove, you may have seen this, because I know the superintendent's got, um, a presentation pretty recently, but, um, they are now telling everyone that they're at eight to 10 weeks. Uh, we have a project right now that they're at 13 weeks. So, um, I think they're being very generous with themselves, that they're saying they're eight to 10 weeks. They have lots of vacancies within their department, and they're required to review everything that comes through, so they have a huge backlog. So this is just another hurdle that we're hitting, um, that we just know is coming down the road related to just review of the design, um, we have to have their approval, um, to move forward, especially with a middle school that has science labs, because that is something that they are required to give approval on.
Right, so in, in short, you know, we're, we're just wanting to share our concerns, make you aware, answer any questions you all have, and, and hopefully just try to work together as a team to figure out what our options are, and, um, and work through it together. So, I mean, with that, that's, that's really all we have. Love to hear any questions you may have. Questions?
Go ahead. Good.
I'm not so much worried about the time as much as I am the capacity. The capacity still bothers me, and, um...
I know I've had some phone calls that were concerning about deep foundations. That's not a problem for the board, as much as it is the capacity. We had a presentation last month, they said the time we open the doors tonight, uh, to, um, the time we open the doors of the new school, it will be at capacity. What, what, uh, did we serve the taxpayers? What do we serve the students? So, deep foundations, to me, I, I, I don't really care one way or the other if you dig them 36 inches or 36 foot. I'm looking for a bigger school.
Yeah, I think right now the program's 2,000, and we've built into it, uh, an ability to expand it to 2,250 students. When the school opens, the, the additional 250 won't be built into it, that will be future classroom additions.
That's the problem.
We have accounted for those classroom additions and the surcharge to where no soil remediation should be required for that. But that's, that's where we are.
So do you, do you anticipate the construction costs will stay the same in the next two years?
You mean, you mean two years from now to do the additions? Of course not, right?
Yep, of course, right. So, that just laminates the point of me saying if we did it now, it would be cheaper later on. You're already gonna open up in the middle of a school year, which I, there again, the start date or the opening date is not, has never been a concern of mine on paper, right? But not having enough, not having enough capacity the following year, because we didn't build the school big enough, and having to come back to the county commissioners and go back to the taxpayers is what I have an issue with.
Well, and Mr. Springer, you and I had talked once before about possibly doing this in phases. So, we could go ahead and get the, go ahead and build the existing design as is, and then going back in, and with, you know, if we have to shift some things around, and actually doing a phase two on this is a possibility. But I do have to say, it is a little concerning to me that, as crowded as our school's over on the east side, and we had a date, and to know that we can't open up a school mid-year, that we're gonna have to wait an entire, another year before we open this up, I must say, is a little disappointing.
Oh, we understand that completely.
Mr. Taylor, if you could add, um, if you could add to the agenda for the next meeting, if you don't mind, to discuss with the rest of the board, um, for approval to expand the school before we get started, before they start digging foundations. When they start digging foundations, it's gonna be, it's gonna be pretty much a moot point at that, at that sector.
You're talking about the, the classroom wing expansions? Yeah, I mean, we can talk internally too, about what, what that looks like.
Well, originally, originally, it was discussed in the design meeting, Mr. Taylor, you probably remember this.
I don't specifically remember a date, but we had a design meeting, uh, Ashley, you were there. And it was originally stated we could add 500, 500 kids per wing, is that, is that right? 500?
I don't think it was stated, sir. I think that was the goal. And then the analysis came back, and we could potentially add 250.
250 per wing?
No, sir. 250 students.
During that design charrette, I remember that one of the things, I don't remember a specific number being given, because obviously it was a design charrette, we were just talking about what was going on. But I do remember that we were, um, we made it very clear that we wanted to have the ability to add on to this school at a future date, should there be the need. 250 students is not a lot, um, to be able to add, but, um...
Eight classrooms?
We can have another, this, this will be another conversation very soon.
Ms. Burns, one thing we did study, Blair, Bordeaux, one thing we did study back when that conversation came up, we studied that 3,000 student, uh, 2,500 student, and, uh, the 2,250 student analysis. We gave a memo on that, uh, and that's how we ended up settling on that 2,250. So I think that would be a, a relevant document to kind of revisit about why we settled there. But we did study, uh, the capacity to go to 3,000 and 2,500. One of the big limiting factors we're running into, uh, is the ability to, uh, the DOT to support that amount of additional students into a single site with two entrances. And, uh, so we're somewhat constrained by that, uh, as far as how many additional students you can bring into that site, just based on, uh, DOT capacity.
Thank you.
And it may, it may be worth noting, we're, we're not necessarily out of the woods with DOT yet on the bell schedule. We have our fingers crossed, we're going back in with, with the TIA resubmittal, and we're really hoping that DOT doesn't give us any trouble about that. But it's, it's really up to them, so. We, we have the plans, you know, single bell schedule, and, uh, that's the way we're proceeding. But until they give us their judgment on it, we're...
Well, and another point is that bell schedule, or not the bell schedule, what's been submitted to, um, NC DOT does include that additional 250. Beyond that, we may end up having to kind of scrap where we are and resubmit with the, you know, with the additional students. So, not to curb the conversation, but just an understanding of some of the dominoes that go into, if we had to change the number, they have the larger number. Whether it's where you wanna be, that's the larger number they have, and anything adjusted may kind of make us have to do, uh, an adjustment and a resubmittal to them.
Okay, so, we are already looking, I mean, uh, is there any chance at all that we could open this school on time?
No way.
Because we just need to know, we need to know what the possibility is of opening the school on time as opposed to if it's definitely gonna be a mid-year by the time that it's done. Because if it's mid-year, then that does give us a little bit more time to reflect on how we should approach this.
The only way we're gonna know with certainty is once, once the surcharge is complete, and once all of our documents get through DPI. Because those two things, we, aside from expediting getting the surcharge built and in place, but the time it takes to settle, and then the time it's gonna take for DPI to approve our documents, there's unknowns there. And so that's, I think, what we recommended in our letter Friday was, this fall, once that surcharge process is complete, we're, we're, we can draw a line in the sand, and we'll know exactly where we are. So I guess that's the question, is, is that too late to, um, you know, for you all to plan and, and figure out with that?
Right, and, and we do have a special call meeting for, I believe, tomorrow. It'll be Thursday. Yes, sir. Uh, we, we are, we're doing our due diligence also, but if you bring an issue to us, we are calling a special call meeting to address this. Because we want this to move along, obviously, we want this to move along as quickly as we possibly can. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Okay, the second item, um, as requested, we are currently in the process of conducting a child attrition satisfaction survey with our stakeholders, our students, as well as our parents. Uh, we currently have, um, 663 elementary responses, 1,333 middle and high school responses, and 974 responses. The student survey will remain open until Friday. The one for parents will remain open until the following Friday. A presentation of those results will be provided as requested at the next regularly scheduled board meeting. Any questions about that? The third item, uh, the facilities modification request for naming room structures and other spaces on campuses in compliance with Policy 9300, Hightech High School, and Topsol High Hightech High School and Topsail High School are both in the process of requesting permission to name rooms, structures or other spaces on their campuses to recognize contributions made by worthy persons. Our team developed a guide and process that would formalize that request as none was currently in place and the documents were provided for review. However, I do think that um, I, I do not think that, did that upload? Because I didn't see it when I went back to review the board pack and sometimes that, the files don't necessarily translate over. Do you have the policy ninety-three hundred guide? If you do not, I will make sure that you have that before you leave today for your review and moving forward. The next item is the cafeteria equipment purchase as was requested to improve the efficiency. Our Mark team, as well as our child nutrition, Pender County staff have reviewed each cafeteria and provided a list of needs for improvement or of the efficiency. The equipment purchase will provide that efficiency and improves operations for our students. The three bids were collected, the lowest bidder would provide these needed items for fifty-two thousand five hundred and eight dollars and fifty-six cents, which would be paid from Fund Five, our enterprise funds, which um, sometimes may commonly be referred to as child nutrition funds. Any questions? We do have a middle of the May, uh, May fourteenth, I think, meeting with vendors to come and provide measurements to reduce the height of several of our elementary serving lines as they are more suited for middle school serving lines. That's part of the efficiency that um, have, I think, been an issue, especially with our K-two kids, their inability to actually be as tall as the serving line. Any questions about that? Okay, the last item I put in there was a placeholder, we've not yet received that pay installment request, but in the event we do, I just wanted to have that placeholder available on the action agenda. As you noticed, they said sixty percent. I was thinking we were going to be closer to a hundred percent done with design development, but we're in the mechanical review at the time with our staff at, at Central Services. So I do not know that that would be on the regular agenda, okay? They usually send them out the first week of May, but I'm just not sure I'll have it before next Tuesday.
Did they get the other air conditioner fixed or the uh, he, the HVAC system fixed over at Burgon Middle?
We have the group from train, I should have gotten an update on that, but I will provide that to you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All the parts have been, did arrive earlier this past month, or this month. Any other questions? Thank you.
Good morning, Board. In your packet, you will see the fuel and electric cost. Any questions relating to that? Okay, the next item are attorney fees. They're in your, included in your packet, any questions related to the attorney fees? The next item is the updated budget presentation, I think Craig's going to pull it up for you and Dr. Bree Love is going to speak to that.
Yes. Board members, we made changes to the presentation as requested, adding in, on slide number nine, we added in three maintenance workers, skilled trade at two hundred thousand dollars is, is really what that would cost. In addition, getting feedback from the county manager, we went through a prioritization survey to, out to schools and site-based teams that they worked on, so we got feedback from all of our schools on both the, the current expense and the capital requests. We also spoke with parents and the superintendent's parent advisory sent that survey out and received that feedback as well. I do have one more to do and that is with our student, superintendent's student advisory, that'll be tomorrow, but on slides nine and twelve, they are prioritized based on the survey feedback from our stakeholders. And you can see there that supplemental increase was prioritized as number one. We all know the value of high-quality teacher, Hattie ranks them as number one with effect size. And so we've got to have great teachers and we have to compete for those teachers. They are in limited supply. Can't argue health and safety. Masala's hierarchy of needs, that's number one. And nurses came in at a very close second. You know, when we rank all of these, you're really talking a point here or there that, that really differentiated them, they're all important. And I think we all can agree that they're important. I asked Mr. Lawson today, I said, Mr. Lawson, what's more important, the, the tire, the hubcap or the lug nuts when you're driving down the road? They're all important. You could have the best wheel and tire, but if you don't have lug nuts on it, it's going to fall off the, it's going to fall off. So I just want us to keep this in mind, that all of these are important. But we did what was asked and you can see here, instructional coaches came in at, at third, assistant principals followed by counselors, social workers and then the, the maintenance skilled trade. And so just depending on the need at the, at that moment is, is really what is most important, right, in, in a school system. So all of these are important, but like I said, we did what the county manager had asked us to do in preparation for Thursday's meeting with the Board of County Commissioners. And if you look on slide number twelve, you will see here, based on that survey, the perception data feedback and, and working with our stakeholders, fire, safety, security is number one, restroom renovations, number two, roofing and gutter replacements, followed by parking lot repairs and then storm water mitigation. These were all part of the original presentation to the county manager and his team and will be presented on Thursday to our Board of County Commissioners. Everything else in the presentation remain the same. Does anyone have any questions based on that as we lead up to Thursday's presentation?
Mr. Taylor, where is that gutter replacement going to be taken care of at?
We have multiple, we have multiple schools that need gutters.
Okay.
Off of Mount East Corner, Rocky Point, mostly our older schools, Burgon Middle School needs some improvements as well, so.
Is Hightech on that list?
Hightech is not. They need some storm water mitigation, but not necessarily our gutters.
I would ask you to send somebody out there to look at those gutters because they're, go ahead.
What specific areas?
If you're pulling into the school, it'll be to the left-hand side, they're rusted, rusted, uh, it's, it's like an open trough. The bottoms of it are, are done. If I'm out, if, if I get a chance, I'll send you a picture of it. Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and the next item for me is the financial summary report, is included in your packet. I highlighted, highlighted several areas just so that you could see where we were. It's now going to be May soon, look up and it's June. So you can see the state is seventy-five percent expended, local is eighty-seven percent expended, federal is seventy-one percent expended, capital is eighty-six percent expended, child nutrition seventy-two, and our grant revenue is seventy percent expended and total overall budget is seventy-six point sixty-five percent expended. You will see there are a few notes where on federal programs, we are waiting on budget amendments and we're currently keen budget amendments and I, I think it was interesting that they talked about DPI and how backed up they are. Again, this is an area where they have openings and it's just taking some, a little bit longer get budget amendments processed through the, through, for the federal programs. Any questions or concerns? I still would like to note that we've had several budget meetings with EC, looking at where we are right now, we're currently having to move some expenditures to cover some overages right now and we will continue that through June thirtieth. We continue to look at the increases and the additional cost for the upcoming year and it, it's, it's a little astounding and, but we're working through it. So just to kind of keep you guys updated on that, I told you that I would, would let you all know how we were doing in the EC area. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board. This morning, we have the first two items are additions from last week, last meeting when we adopted some science materials. The high schools finished their need assessment and we're looking at Vernier Science Education for some lab materials. These kinds of materials through Vernier are very specific, they are LabQuest materials, which provide probes and sensors and things for them to actually do labs in classes. There's a lot of, there's a lot of need to replace old Vernier lab equipment at the high school level across all buildings. Verniers is one fifty-seven, four oh two fifty-one. And the second one is Carolina Biological. And if you'll notice on that as well, Carolina Biological enables teachers to work hands-on with students. We need some microscopes, some compound microscopes, some hot plates, more lab materials for those science labs with these two, with these two recommendations. Any questions on those? Okay, the third item is the Head Start Required Reporting Program. Here, it's just the regular reporting that we have, just to highlight, there's two hundred and sixty-three total enrollment for pre-K. They did a hundred and fifty-seven point seven-five hours of volunteer hours. I know pre-K has been doing a lot of work getting kids ready to enroll for next year for pre-K, for Head Start, so, and getting kids tested and things like that as well. Any questions on Head Start, pre-K reporting? All right, last thing is the alternative accountability model for Pender Innovative Learning Academy. We're recommending for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year to stay with the same option that we went with last year. Do you have a question? Sorry.
Yeah, well, I wasn't expecting you to stop, but.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I wanted, I wanted to reach back to the pre-K attendance, right, or the population. Do we have room for expansion for the pre-K? Because I, I've ran into several instances at different events and parents talk about there's not enough room for their child to become enrolled. Is that, do you hear the same problem?
There's, there's only so many spots available, so there's, there's close to, what, a hundred and fifty students to two hundred students on the waiting list?
Because of our funding, we're only funded for a certain number of children. We don't have universal preschool like a lot of other states. So we have people move in from other states and say, well, my, why can't my child get in? We have to qualify and we have the, the children that are the highest risk with the most risk factors that go in first.
Okay.
But if you have lots of money you want to give me to. And some more space, you know, that would be great, I would love it.
We have eighteen classrooms currently.
Throughout the.
Throughout the district, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Is that, is that a self-sufficient program? I mean, the pre-K?
Yeah, we don't, I mean, we receive space from, and any kind from Pender County Schools, but we don't receive any local funding, it's all Head Start and NC pre-K funded. We do have one position that's partially paid out of Pender.
Is there any pre-K going on at West Pender Middle?
West Pender doesn't have it.
Yeah, I know it's, I know it's elementary school, I'm just saying with the space that they have open, why, why would we not try to utilize some of that space? I understand it's a middle school.
It's funding.
Okay.
We don't, we don't have enough funding to increase our number of slots or spaces.
All right, thank you.
All right, the last thing on there is the accountability model for Pila. We are recommending that we stay with the same model that we used last year, which was option B, which twenty percent of their score is student persistence, twenty percent is school achievement, which includes all of the EOGs, ACTs, EOCs, graduation rate and all of those, and sixty percent, the third item is sixty percent growth. So we're recommending to stay with the same model. Any questions on that? Thank you very much.
Good morning, Board members. You have in front of you, I think, five policies that are up for first read. The first one deals with delineation of investigative roles of SROs and school personnel. Any questions regarding that one at the moment? The second one for review, I think, is long-term suspension. It just provides additional considerations recommended for long-term suspension. It ties in a couple of other factors to, that the school should look at in terms of, you know, prior history with the student's discipline record, things of that nature. And then the consultation with other student support services that would allow for a greater picture of what the child may need moving forward. The next policy is forty-three fifty-one. I'm sorry, any questions about the previous one? The next policy updates pre, pre-suspension rights of a student. This one basically changes the word may, it's the only one change in here. The principal may is changed to the principal shall impose a short-term suspension without first providing a student with an opportunity for a hearing. If the student is at risk of hurting themselves or others or a substantial disruption to the school day. Now, that doesn't mean that the student will not be provided a hearing or due process, it just means it'll be provided later at the risk of, of, you know, the student engaging in other activities that will be harmful to the school environment or to the student, his or herself and others. Twenty-one fifteen, this brings into compliance a board policy that needed to be reviewed with now that the board elections are partisan. This brings into play that the vacating member would be appointed by, or the, the seat vacated by the member leaving would be appointed by the political party that held that seat. That was, it was previously written in there that the school board would make that determination. And it's just an old policy that needed to be updated to fit our current times.
So this is based on a North Carolina law?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. There is a, I think I listed it in the summary.
All of this, including thirty days of the occurrence, I mean, the whole thing is based on law?
Yeah. So it's general statute one fifteen C dash thirty-seven, the important one is point one.
Point one, yeah.
That's the, that's the part that, that is in play now. And that was established, and Brandon, you can help me out if you want to, but that was established when school boards have the option to go to, go partisan. Is that all correct?
So, that's right. So originally, there was one fifteen C thirty-seven, which is the statute you were under for non-harson election. elections. 115(c)(37.1) is for partisan elections, and it has a list of counties that that statute applies to, and Pender is on that list. So, Kevin is exactly right. Any questions, Board?
Take note of that. I'm not always exactly right. But this time, I am.
Run with it.
Yeah, I'm going to run with it. The last policy is 3415. This is actually an R, which means it's like an R and P, a process procedure. This brings into play, what we're trying to do with this policy is increase our attendance and rewarding those students that do so. So we are, all classes should have a final exam. It counts 20% of their grade. This gives a chance for a student to elect not to have their final exam if they're in good attendance and a, so for instance, six or fewer absences and an A average, they would have the option to exempt the exam. So forth, four and a B, and zero with a C. Now, it's important to note also, in accordance with 115(c)(378), a student can be exempted and is not present for the school day. Also, if the student wishes to, they'll still be counted absent, in other words. If the student wishes to take the final exam, they can, even if they meet the exemption criteria. And they will be, if it ends up helping their score, great. If it doesn't, they're held harmless. So, any questions on this policy? Again, this is first read. That's another way for us to help to enhance our attendance in schools. If there are no questions, I appreciate your time.
Is anyone on the phone have any questions?
Mr. Taylor, this is Mr. Cordero. I have one question about policy 4340.
Yes.
So you're essentially saying if there's suspected lawbreaking, that the SRO is required to be involved. Do I interpret that correctly?
Essentially, yes. So I'll draw your attention to reasonable suspicion and probable cause. Those are a couple of things I added in there. So once a principal has reasonable suspicion of a law that may have been broken, they immediately should contact the SRO and alert them of that possibility. And then it becomes the SRO's job to establish probable cause. Again, those two entities work side by side in the investigation, one at the school level and one at the law enforcement level. Does that answer your question?
Okay. Yes, it does. And I'll use one specific example just to clarify. So for the example, for example, let's say a student has a vape pen, okay? So tobacco is a controlled substance in the state of North Carolina. It's unlawful for anyone under the age of 18 to consume tobacco or possess a vape pen. And so if a vape pen is found, then the SRO needs to be involved under this policy. And if the SRO is not involved, then that would be a violation of policy. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep. Any other questions, Mr. Smith, or anybody else on the phone?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Board members.
All right.
Board members, and Mr. McPherson, as Bordeaux presented in that, they have a request that that site package be passed, and they would like to post on Friday. There would be a need for a special meeting for the, or can the Board do that now? Or is that a special meeting that needs to be done 48 hours from now and posted to vote on what Bordeaux presented?
My opinion is, because it was a request pursuant to an item that was on this agenda, the Board could choose to vote on it now. Now, it would have to add that, it would have to go back to the item to address it, but that's at the pleasure of the Board.
So they can vote on it now if they choose to do so, to let them go ahead and move forward with the posting of that?
If that's what the Board chooses to do. In order, I mean, you're all already here and together, and it was an item that was already on your agenda.
Dr. Brelo, what I want to iterate is, if we approve this now and we go to expand it, it's going to change the whole contract. Well, not the whole contract, but it's going to change the price of what he's going to put out to contractors, right? So if he goes out there basically to tell you he's going to clear off 220,000 square feet, and then all of a sudden it expands to 300,000, well, obviously, it's not going to be done, you know, that additional 80,000 ain't going to be done for free. I thought he said that they would, they were already planning on making the site ready for that additional expansion. Okay. I didn't hear that. My apologies. Yes, sir. Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Yes. So are you, let's get this clarified before we make any rash decisions. Is, did he refer to the 250 extra, and that was the only ones? Or are you talking about the 3,000 that we had originally discussed and getting investigated? 250. Right. So additional caps on those wings? Yep. Yes, sir. There again, it's going to, I think, I think it's a discussion that we should further engulf in. Mr. Cordero, can you hear me on the telephone?
Yes, Mr. Springer, I can.
Okay. So I'm going to lean on you a little bit to try to help remember, to help us all remember what the price was after they investigated to expand the school to 3,000 or 3,500, whatever it was, if you remember that.
The only figures that I recall were the expanded 2250. I'd have to look at the previous agenda packets. I apologize to try to recall the figures for up to the 3,000. Now, while we're on the phone here, while we're meeting here, I'm happy to, I'll trample those documents up. If you'll just give me a few minutes. I don't know if we have any other business or if you want to pause for that.
Does any of the staff have it readily available as far as what the figures were? No? Okay.
This is Porto outside. Can you make it?
Sure.
Now, to address, to address, this is Mr. Cordero, to address the topic at hand, I mean, we can also, without need for a special meeting notice, we can just recess until Thursday as well. If we have staff do that research in between now and then, that's also a possibility.
Yeah. That's a good idea. I think it's a good idea. Yep.
Yeah.
Thursday, we are at the county commissioners at four. We could possibly recess until three.
Sounds good to me.
Meet here an hour before.
All right.
Set up the same way, a call-in, or set up the same way, whether you call in or not?
Just like this.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So there's three, well, is three enough time? It's an hour before.
I believe that, well, how busy are you guys going to be before the presentation to the... I'm sorry.
How busy, well, you're ready. All right. That's what we like to hear.
What, about 10 minutes to go up the road, so we would have roughly about 50 minutes to discuss this? Does everybody believe that 50 minutes is enough to get this settled?
Y'all good with it?
I know what I'm going to do.
I think 50 minutes is more than enough.
Mr. Cordero, Mr. Smith, is, with three work for y'all, okay?
Mr. Smith, that's how I'm going to make.
Okay.
Mr. Cordero, three is fine. I would need it to tend to be a phone if that's not too inconvenient, but the time would be fine.
Oh, no, that'll be fine. We can have it just like this.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll recess then until 3 o'clock on Thursday. Listen, does anybody have anything else before we leave today?
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we recess this meeting until 3 o'clock on Thursday. I'm sorry, Thursday, May 2nd. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Burns has made a motion for the recess. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Springer has made a second. All in favor, say aye.
Beth Burns, aye.
Brent Springer, aye.
Ken Smith, aye.
All right.
Gobernador, aye.
All right. Unanimous. Thank you. The meeting is adjourned to 3:00 on Thursday.